Hi.
Hey.
Hey Rory, can you guys hear us up here?
Yeah, I can hear you Kathy.
Thank you. When Teresa arrives, tell her you can hear me because she said she didn't hear me earlier.
His birthday cake is this?
I don't know, is it some other?
It expires tomorrow. Oh my God. Well, that's nice.
I feel like it's enjoying the picture.
I don't know how.
You have to enjoy the picture.
Goat on there.
Yeah. Fun card.
That's nice.
We can't hear Kathy.
No, we can now.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, okay, I hear.
So are we good? We're recording?
Okay. I got two keys.
Okay, we are recording.
Are we recording?
Yep, we're recording.
Online there. Get up the agenda here. Okay. Are we ready to go? All the staff here? Okay, I will then call to order this pre-meeting of the Western City Council. And it looks like we're recording live, so if you can go ahead and get started. We have the legislative start with an approval of the agenda, public comment, mayor and council reports with a couple of appointments. Just so everybody knows Kathy did ask to send me the application and see if that the term for this appointment expires in December. You know.
So this is a real short appointment.
One or two month appointment, so she said we could appoint or we could just wait until December meeting and make the appointment, so. This is for the Arts and Culture Commission. Just wanted to flag that for them.
Yeah. There are big events have already just, they're kind of yearly events happened, is that right?
Yes, October, month of October.
Right. Or is happening.
I think we wait.
I just wanted to flag.
I would agree with that. I don't know what Kevin thinks.
Councilor Groner. Okay, you okay with waiting till December to make the Arts and Culture appointments?
Yeah, I don't think much is going to happen the rest of the year.
The term goes through December, so.
Yes.
A hurdle there. Okay.
It'll survive.
So we can fill that off the agenda. We've got the Oregon City Weston Rivalry. So the mayor of Oregon City today. About that.
No arbitration was possible.
No. Meeting minutes. Thank you Kathy. And then we go into the business meeting and I'll turn it over to John to walk through the two items.
We have two agenda edits on the business meeting. Both are, well, starting with Darren. Who is here this evening to answer any process questions you have, and as usual, we won't talk about content in the pre-meeting, but it's an ordinance adopting text amendments to a variety of chapters. Full staff report in the packet. If there's any information needs you have that you want to share with us right now, or questions with Darren about process, we're happy to answer those. Otherwise.
I'll be moving. I think we saw this in a work session previously.
Yeah, I was just here, a meeting in September, so. I'll try to keep the presentation a little briefer than the.
I've given it two other times as part of the planning mission.
Would you like to present it?
No, that's okay. I'll let the professionals do that.
And then Eric, this is a new item. We'll cover it, of course, during the meeting, but you may have had an opportunity to read the packet. If there's anything that you want Eric or Kaylee to research in the few minutes before the meeting, information that you don't have in the packet, questions you might have, we'd be happy to provide those. Relatively small item, but sometimes small items require a fair amount of staff time to bring to you.
These are a bargain. Look at those purchase prices on there. Thank you. Our first strategic acquisition of many.
It's a very odd shape. I will make that up.
Flattery, yeah.
Yeah. And the other one is right next door to property where we're doing so, potential connection. But well, yeah. Good job Eric.
Darren did say there was some interest with that. The stormwater facility or whatever, I guess, planning out if they could put something about food company.
That would be really, really difficult to achieve as you think about that topography and just being there. The only issue with that one, which you know, we did note in the ordinance I drafted, that the city manager would be delegated all this. Carry out the transaction, including if possible, where possible, getting an environmental assessment. You know, we traditionally do those advise when you acquire property, the potential issue is with that single track B parcel behind Safeway. If it is, if it's auctioned by the county, there is a chance that we will not be permitted to do an environmental assessment before acquiring it. And so would defer to Eric's knowledge of the property, having maintained it for the last like decade or so. And so I just wanted that to be clear that we're certainly going to try. And I asked the county council if we could begin that now and get it done, and she said we don't have permission to do the sampling on the parcel right now. So that's the only one that I just wanted to flag for your awareness.
So they said we don't have permission to do it yet?
No, because it's subject to, that's the weird one, subject to a class action lawsuit while it's being by the county. However, she conveyed to me, and I would make sure this isn't writing, but if it's bought at auction, it basically clears it from that encumbrance of the class action. However, they can't, I guess, she said they can't give us permission to be on the county right now. Yeah. So that's why I feel like there's a strong chance we won't be able to get that EA done for that parcel. That's obviously a risk to consider. Staff has worked with the property for a long time and it's really an important piece of our stormwater drainage facility.
Thanks for researching all that.
Okay.
Process questions at the end of the business meeting, just city manager report after that.
Okay. Items are adjourned. Okay. Then we will adjourn this meeting and have 20 minutes until we start upstairs. Thank you, everybody.
Yep. What kind of?
Can you do that one? Mary and Barry, I think. What?
Testing, testing.
Okay. Looks like we're ready. I checked in with Kevin in the back. We're ready to go. And are we ready with the city recorder and the equipment? Okay. Well, it's 6:01, so might as well get started. I will call it to order. This meeting of the Westland City Council, it's Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Good evening, everybody, on a beautiful fall afternoon and evening. And the first item of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance so we can rise and turn towards the flag. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And the next item of business is to approve the agenda. And we're going to remove item 4B, the Community Advisory Group appointment, because it was raised that the term for this appointment would expire in December. So we're just going to make the Final Arts and Culture Commission appointment in the December, at our December meeting to minimize some administrative hurdles and potential confusion for the applicants.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda with the change of removing item 4B for the October 14th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, removing item 4B for the Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 City Council meeting. Any discussion? I see none, so we call the roll.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Maybe the Stosky?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion passes. And the agenda is approved unanimously. And we turn to public comments of a general nature. Looking out in the audience, I don't see any members of the esteemed public here.
There are none.
There are, there are no public, anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, we got to get more people here to the city council chambers. But maybe they're watching on YouTube. I know a lot of people watch on YouTube.
We need Frog Customs.
Okay, so that takes us right to mayor and council reports. Reports from community advisory groups or city business in general. Does anybody have a report tonight? I can just start with, oh, Council Bright doesn't have one. Council President, would you like to make a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can report that I attended the Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration at Clackamas Community College and that I was able to participate in some of the activities and it was very fun. And they had the foresight to hold it indoors this year. And it was good because it was raining quite a bit of the time. So, and that is about all I can report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Since our last, we had a busy week last week with the City Council work session on Tuesday and then our wonderful facilitated discussion about the city's budget outlook and staffing needs. And I appreciated having that discussion with all of our city staff and the city council. And I'm looking forward to the next steps on that. And then it's only been a few days since that meeting. So I don't have anything beyond appreciation for everybody's participation to report tonight. So I will turn it over to Council Groner if you have anything to report.
Nothing in the last few days, no.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilor Bonnington, please.
Okay. I'll start by reminding everyone that Parks is having the Fall Fest this Saturday at Marius Young. It's always a lot of fun.
Fall Fest.
I heard Howell might be there. So there's that. Now, I personally attended the Oregon Main Street Conference in Albany last week. And Kathy, if you have the, the thing. We won an award celebrating the partnership of Historic Willamette Main Street and the city on our, our WarCon Willamette Falls Drive a few years ago. So there's the award.
That's, that looks like a trophy or plaque kind of thing?
Yeah, it's kind of a glass trophy thing. Difficult to photograph, so a little blur.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so we won that. And then I took, took a tour of various things in Albany and was kind of surprised at where that city is at and how much they've done to restore a lot of their historic assets and improve their downtown park. And yeah, a lot of good stuff to learn there.
And you went to the conference as well, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah.
The Main Street Conference, very nice. And I know I saw a nice photo of yourself holding the trophy with Rebecca and our team from Public Works, Eric and Luke, and several board members from the Historic Willamette Main Street group. That's an awesome partnership and I think well deserving of this award, given what Main Street means to our city. Also known as Willamette Falls Drive, yes. Thank you for attending, by the way. Appreciate that. Anything else for the, from the council? Anybody forget anything? Okay. We can move right along then on the agenda to the next item. I'm just pulling the agenda back up here. The next item is the proclamation, which is a very special one every year. The Oregon City Westland, Oregon City Westland Rivalry Day proclamation, which is issued by the City of Westland and the City of Oregon City. And I will read it and then we present it usually to the teams at the senior football breakfast that takes place during the month. So a proclamation, Oregon City Westland Rivalry Day, whereas the Cities of Oregon City and Westland wish to recognize the efforts of their community members to create and maintain a positive family environment where children can learn the value of constructive competition. And whereas the Cities of Oregon City and Westland value tradition and history as essential parts of their communities. And whereas Oregon City High School and Westland High School, formerly known as Union High School, have competed valiantly in the sport of football continuously since 1921, except during the pandemic of 2020. When whereas on October 31st, 2025, the teams representing these schools will renew their annual rivalry for the 105th time. And whereas this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi, which is true, and therefore worthy of tremendous recognition. And whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires the pioneers defeat the Lions, and the City Council of the City of Westland, of course, desires that the Lions again defeat the pioneers. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Westland, hereby recognize and commend all community members who have participated in the annual Gridiron Classic and support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming October 31st, 2025, in addition to Halloween, to be Oregon City Westland Rivalry Day. And we recommend in the spirit of the day that all community members wear clothing of the appropriate colors and refrain from crossing the river unless business requires until 7:00 PM on that day. And we will ask the city attorney to review how we can enforce that requirement. Now, it's all in jest, but it's a noble proclamation. So thank you, everybody. And we look forward to a special day where Halloween and this rivalry day coincide. I don't think that's happened previously in my time here. So I will sign this proclamation. And then I imagine Mayor McGriff of Oregon City will issue the proclamation and then we will present it to the teams. So with that, any other comments on the proclamation? Anybody? Okay, we can move right on to the consent agenda. And I always ask, is there any objection to the meeting minutes that would require them being pulled for discussion? Okay, see, I see none. So with that, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda for the October 14th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, which includes the September 8th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll, no discussion.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Beal Stosky?
Yes. Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. And now we are going to transition. I have to pull up my script here to our public hearing. And for Agenda Bill 2025-1014-2, an ordinance 1763, adopting text amendments to the Westland Community Development Code, chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99, to update language to be clear and objective for minimum and maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and the shape of newly created lots. And you're going to hear that title read several times tonight. So get used to it, everybody. I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams if you'd like to introduce the topic for us. And I'll find my script here.
Yes, we do have a script that we would suggest you read to get this going. And I just want to thank Darren for his work on this project all the way along, including coming before the Planning Commission several times, previous council work session, and tonight for your consideration of adopting this. And we'll go ahead and read the legislative script.
Okay, yeah, I found it. You bought me a little bit of time to find it in my email here. Good evening. A Legislative Public Hearing on CDC 2501, a proposal to amend chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99 of the Community Development Code is called to order. The proposed amendments will update the language to be clear and objective for minimum and maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and the shape of newly created lots. The testimony and arguments we hear will be used to come to a decision on these amendments tonight or at a later date. The proceedings will, the hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions and then the council will hear public testimony. And after the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed and the council will discuss the proposal and make a decision. If you want to speak tonight, sign up using the signup form and wait until it's your turn and you'll have up to five minutes. And you'd have to state your name and city residence if you want to speak. And I will now ask the city attorney to cover the preliminary legal matters.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we'll go over the applicable standards and appeal rights. The council's decision must be based on consideration of the statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted under ORS Chapter 197, the applicable federal or state statutes or rules, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro, and, excuse me, on the city's comprehensive plan and development code. The council may consider any relevant testimony that we receive. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the city council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit written comments or present oral arguments. Next, we'll turn to conflicts of interest. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or an actual conflict of interest? Seeing none, I note for the record that no conflicts of interest were raised. And I'll turn it back to staff.
Thank you. So yes, we can proceed to the staff report and Mr. Weiss.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, for the record, Darren Weiss, Principal Planner with the city. And I've got a very brief presentation. I was here before you on September 15th for a work session briefing. And there were no major questions from the council at that time. So I think we can get through this relatively quickly. But I will go through the, the three topics for you. So in your council packet for, for tonight, there was the Agenda Bill with some background information, including the three different topics that we're, we will be discussing tonight. The minimum and maximum density calculations, the minimum density exemptions, and the shape of newly created lots and parcels. I'll go through each of those individually through my slides here. There was also the meeting links to the Planning Commission work sessions and public hearing. The legal council had a recommended edition after the Planning Commission. So I will reference that as we move forward. And then also the work session links from city council. Two attachments, one being the ordinance 1763, which is the actual code language amendments. And then the staff report to council, which again included some more background information, a little more detailed, the findings required for the various legal criteria that the city attorney just read, the Planning Commission recommendation memo, and then the affidavit, affidavit and notice packet showing that we noticed the meeting appropriately. All right, so there are three topics associated with this amendment package. The first one being the minimum and maximum density calculations. The reason this was brought forward was the Community Development Code currently, this is not found in one location on how to calculate minimum and maximum density. The language is not clear and objective. We've had some discussions with property owners and developers around what the language actually means. So we're cleaning that up to make it clear and objective so everyone understands the route to get to the minimum and the maximum density calculations, and then not clearly defined either. The city is required to have a minimum density standard for each zone, which the city's minimum density is at 70% of the maximum. This is required through the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. And staff also looked at other cities in the metro area, how they define minimum and maximum density, and then how they set up their calculations and, and use some of the, some of the other cities' code criteria in order to create these, create these amendments. There are a few exemptions from the, from the minimum density calculations. Those are for middle housing projects, middle housing land divisions, planned unit developments, which are, are calculated using a different formula. And then partitions, which, topic two, I will, I will speak about that in more detail. So the actual proposed amendments, chapter two and definitions, we're going to eliminate current definitions of acres gross and acres net and just add a more common term of developable gross area and developable net area, which was already used in the code in other places. In chapter five, we're going to create a measurement section. Again, this is, this is going to show how you, the process to calculate the developable net area. And that is done by taking the developable gross area, removing type one and type two lands, parked lands, public right of way or private streets from the, from the gross developable area. And then the, the city's code currently has an option to remove heritage or significant trees from that calculation. So we're going to keep that in there as an option to remove that. And then I will circle back to this. This is where the legal council recommended we add one small addition after the Planning Commission recommendation. So, again, it'll create the process to count that, calculate that maximum density and that minimum density in that Chapter 5. And then, Chapter 24, 55, and 85, it's just cleaning up random references and then referencing everything back to that Chapter 5 to show how you get to those calculations. So, that was topic one. Again, we're not changing any, any policy around this, we're just cleaning up the language to make it clear and objective. Topic two, the same, not changing any policy, just cleaning up the language. Again, for partition minimum density exemption, again, we've had differing, differing interpretations from the development community over the last six months or so. So, obviously, that means it's not clear and objective if people are reading it differently. And again, the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan requires the city to have a minimum zone capacity for all residential properties. The, the, the functional plan does allow cities to reduce the minimum zone capacity of a single lot or parcel with negligible effect. So, this is the example I used in the, in the staff report. So, the argument that we were being presented with by the development community was if they were only doing three, three parcel partition, they were exempt from that minimum density standard. But staff's, staff's interpretation was if you had a five-acre property and the maximum density was 24 lots in an R7 zone, that would make the minimum density 17 lots. And if you only did three, that would not be a negligible effect. You would be, you'd be severely reducing the density on that lot. So, we wanted to make the language clear and objective, so that argument could not be used anymore. So, it's just one, one, one chapter in this topic, Chapter 85. The language change is on the screen there. Again, it's just, it's just being very clear that the minimum density is 70%, and it does not apply to planned unit developments where density is calculated differently. And then, again, the minimum density calculations under that Chapter 5 that result in three parcels or less are, are exempt and can divide into two parcels. So, if, after you do the minimum density requirements and you get to three, three, then we allow you to drop to two. So, that's the negligible effect. And then, the third and final topic, shape of newly created lots and parcels. Again, many different interpretations over the last six months about what, what the current language means. So, again, obviously not clear and objective. So, the, the intent is to create consistent size and shape, creating square and rectangular lots and parcels, eliminating unnecessary or irregular lines. This helps with future development patterns, future extension of streets, and also building community and neighborhoods and trying to keep the homes along the street and not, not having a bunch of homes buried behind other homes. So, impact more consistent development patterns moving into the future. The, the images on the screen there are just two recent partitions that have been done with extremely irregular lines, and the code just didn't allow us to enforce keeping them at extreme rate angles to the, to the front or rear property line. So, the actual code amendments, again, in Chapter 2 definitions, we're going to add a definition for rectilinear in Chapter 5, in that measurement section that I, I mentioned earlier. We're going to create a segmented lot parcel lines section. A lot of other city codes in the metro area have this. It, it allows some lateral changes, but primarily wants you to keep the, the lots rectilinear. And it has measurement directions with, with figures that show how you, how you can calculate that lateral change. And then, in Chapter 85, land divisions, again, cleaning up the language, requiring the rectilinear lines unless not practicable, practicable, practicable because of existing property lot, property lines, street radius around a cul-de-sac or a curve, or natural figures, features like a creek or a slope that, that had created a, an unnatural or a irregular property line in the first place. And again, referencing everything back to that Chapter 5 on how you do the calculations. All right, so the, the process to get through this, again, two work sessions with the Planning Commission this summer. Their public hearing was August 6th, where they recommended approval to city council. Legal council recommended one addition. It's in blue there, it's hard to see on the screen, but just adding the, the, the language as measured in CDC 55051C2A. Again, that's just being very clear and objective of how you, how you measure heritage trees or, or significant tree or tree clusters. Again, there was a work session with city council on September 15th where no major issues were brought forward, and then we're here tonight for the public hearing and potential adoption of the code amendments. So, questions, questions of staff at this time?
Thank you for the concise but thorough presentation. Any questions from the city council at this time? I see none. So, I will pull up the script again, and then we will proceed to an opportunity for public testimony. Open that part of the public hearing and ask if there's anybody signed up online or in person to speak on this item.
There are none.
And I'm not certain that we received any written comments on this either, but if we did, they'll be included in the record. I haven't seen anything.
There were no written comments submitted.
Okay. Thank you. So, I will close that portion of the hearing. And any other final questions of staff? I see none. So, the public hearing is now closed, and we will proceed to deliberations. Does any counselor wish to make a motion or comment on the matter? Counsel President, you have?
If no one else has any comments, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve first reading for Ordinance 1763, adopting text amendments to the Westland Community Development Code, Chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99, to update language to be clear and objective for minimum maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and shape of newly created lots, and set the matter for second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve for first reading for Ordinance 1763, adopting text amendments to the Westland Community Development Code, Chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99, to update language to be clear and objective for minimum maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and the shape of newly created lots, and set the matter for second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, you can call the roll, please.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Bealostowski?
Yes. Thank you. I know it seems silly to read the whole thing, but it's required to adopt the ordinances. So.
I move to approve second reading for Ordinance 1763, adopting text amendments to the Westland Community Development Codes, Chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99, to update language to be clear and objective for minimum maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and shape of newly created lots, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading for Ordinance 1763, adopting text amendments to the Westland Community Development Code, Chapters 2, 5, 24, 55, 85, and 99, to update language to be clear and objective for minimum and maximum density calculations, minimum density exemptions, and the shape of newly created lots, and adopt the ordinance. One last chance for discussion. I'll just say, thank you, Darren and the Planning Department for bringing this forward, and thanks to the Planning Commission for spending three meetings on it and making it so the product is perfect for us to adopt, and also to thank you to the city attorney's office as well for your review and addition there. So, we appreciate you all, all your work. Okay, you can call the roll then.
Counsel Groner?
Yes.
Counsel Bonnington?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So, the ordinance is adopted on the unanimous vote. We hope we, we made everybody's lives a little easier in the Planning Department with this and the community. Thank you, Darren. And now, we will turn to Public Works, and our director, Eric Leis, is coming up for the second item of the business meeting, Resolution 2025-14, approving the acquisition of real property in Westland, Oregon, a couple of strange little lots that could have some use for the city. And I will turn it over to Eric and John for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We appreciate your attention to this, and I just want to thank the staff that worked on this, catching this opportunity, figuring out the legality of it, and delivering you a package that seems reasonable. Took more work than expected, but I appreciate the team that put this together, and Eric will explain to you what we're proposing and where these little cute parcels are. Take it away, Eric.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Councilors, Eric Leis, Public Works Director, City Engineer. As you stated, Mayor, here tonight to talk about some interesting, strange parcels. Do I have control of it, or? I put together a quick PowerPoint, a few slides, just to kind of illustrate what's in the agenda report to make it a little, little bit easier. So, the first tax lot, 00907, is, it's considered Track B per the plat of part of Cascade Summit Marketplace. It's currently an existing stormwater facility. It's been an existing stormwater facility for 20-plus years. So, I'll get into the details on that one. And then, really, how it all started was with some redevelopment down off of Reed and Cornwall. We were working with some potential development and how to make things fit, and this parcel came up, and then, sort of a weird story, so I'm going to go through it backwards, but how we got to the stormwater pond through the county was because I didn't ask about this piece down on, on Reed Street. Whoop. Is that you or me? Okay. Hit it, hit it one more time. So, yeah, this is a small little sliver of, of land, and so, if you remember, a few years ago, we had the Cornwall Landis potential street connection there. You can see it. Does this have a? Nope. Uh, nope. There you go. So, you can see the piece right here. This is the Icon Development, Willa Ridge, from a few years ago. We ended up with a dead-end street on Landis that terminates here at this property, and then a private drive over to Cornwall. There's, Icon's been in talk, the Portlock Company has been in talk about, I believe, seven to eight homes, and then, how does the street connection work through that property? This piece is also in talks with the Portlock Company. Portlock Company, if you drive down there, they've, I believe there's three new homes there. Anyway, so, in short, this area is in redevelopment territory, or TSP calls for a street connection, Project Number 19, that would connect Cornwall over to Reed. Now, if anybody's listening, I'm not saying this is going to happen anytime soon. I'm just, it's in the TSP, it would allow for connectivity through the subdivisions and redevelopment of that area. So, anyway, I approached the county. They don't want it, they probably forgot they had it, and so, they gave me a price for it. They then decided to say, hey, we have this other list of parcels. Would you be interested in the rest of them? And I said, okay, well, we'll take a look at it. So, I'm going through the probably dozen parcels, and Track B comes up, and I'm like, wait a minute, that's, I walked down there even, I'm like, that's our stormwater facility. And, and so, that's when I got Kaylee's help looking into the investigation of, shouldn't this be ours? I feel like we own this. We've been maintaining it since the plat was recorded and so on. So, and that's where it gets a little bit tricky with the history of the parcel. And if we go back, and I appreciate Kaylee and Krista's research on it, but it appears that when the plat was going to be recorded for this development, the stormwater facility was not up to our standards yet, so we didn't accept it, is the way it appears. That was, then never went back and then beat it over to the city, as these normal tracks of, of lands are. So, it's a unique situation. It was listed on land auction property list, sale list from the county. There's a picture of it in the Montessori School right behind it, if anybody's not familiar with it. Yes, I already jumped ahead of myself a little bit there. This, this is part of the plat, and it says it's owned by the developers that developed Cascade Summit. And then, this piece in the decision for the land use, as I just mentioned, said it wasn't meeting our standards. Developer will, a developer ownership maintenance agreement shall be required. I'm not sure that ever happened. So, in, in short, I think this is where I get into the foreclosure. So, the owners left it into foreclosure, it reverted back to the county. There was an auction. Starting bid was $11,000, $682. No bids were received. This is where it gets a little tricky, and I might ask Kaylee for some help, but understanding is that if we look to bid the next auction, we could get it for a lot cheaper than, potentially a lot cheaper than $11,000, and it would get us, excuse me, it would get us out of a potential class action lawsuit entanglement that the property currently is in. So, you know, we believe taking ownership is critical for the stormwater facility in that area. It treats part of the townhomes behind us here, and then Cascade, the commercial development over here by Safeway. So, it's critical, we've been maintaining it as, as if it were our own. Most recently, we did about $7,000 worth of landscape restoration to it prior to knowing all the crazy history with it. So, with that, I'll see if Kaylee has anything. I sort of rambled, but.
No, I think you did great. This was a really interesting piece of property, because we inquired, you know, what's the process to bid, because we were interested in the first auction, and that's when I spoke with the Clackamas County Council, who handles real property. And she said it's a very strange situation where apparently, you know, as properties fall into foreclosure, they're forfeited and they're reclaimed by the county, and certain counties were selling them basically at a surplus and, and keeping that gain. And so, there's a class action lawsuit, and I don't understand the total breadth of it, but it sounds enormous against, I think, a lot of counties who've had this practice in the past, and so, they are in the process, like, right in the middle of that litigation. And she also mentioned that there's been some Oregon legislative changes through the legislature recently in terms of what the county has to do with these types of properties. So, they're working with two, two kind of dynamic evolving legal structures. And so, my understanding from her was the cleanest way to obtain this parcel, if we want it, is to bid on it at the public auction, because you receive it as is, and it doesn't, basically, you get it free and clear of the past entanglements with the county. Of course, if we do that, I will make sure the legal document transferring, you know, the interest makes that. the interest makes that very clear, because my recommendation to staff was the city's not interested in taking the place of the county as the owner of that property and being part of that class action lawsuit. And so that's why we came forward here. Our code does require any acquisitions of an interest in real property to be approved by the council. And so we're getting this ahead of time. So when we are made aware of when the second auction will be, Eric will be ready and able to bid on that property. They haven't posted what the new price will be, but it sounds like it'll be significantly lower than that first price. It's...I believe it's only supposed to recap the back taxes, which are somewhere in the area of, I believe, $2,000-ish dollars. So it should come down a lot. But we just wanted to give wiggle room, depending on what that price is and if people were to bid on it. So that's the background I have, but I'm happy to entertain other questions.
Thank you for that. And does that conclude your presentation? You ready for some council discussion? Counselor Groner has a question or comment.
Yeah. Who else might be bidding this property? And is this $11,600 bid?
So there were no bids on it? That was going to be the starting bid from the county. Yeah, there were no bids. We did hear, I heard today from our planning staff, that there was some interest in it, perhaps, ask about a particular land use on it, but there were no bids, so.
Yeah, I think if you're not familiar with the property on paper, it might sound interesting in Westland and this area. And then you go look at what it actually is, and it doesn't appear to be developable. It's a drainage, wetland-y area, and it's steep. And so I think that's why, you know, the city or the county council did, you know, admit to me, they have tons of these properties, and they get...they have a metric for calculating the opening bid, but they often haven't gone out and actually surveyed the property and see what's there. So that opening $11,000-ish is probably much higher than the going rate.
Any other questions? The council president, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. And I just wanted to clarify, kind of, for anyone and for the record, that us taking on this property would, as you said, not expose us to this legal action that it's currently under?
Yes, the language on that slide there, it should say that the city...it says no indemnification from the county. Basically, it should say the city does not have to indemnify the county and stand in their shoes. And so that is my understanding, and I certainly will...I mean, that was verbally conveyed to me, but I will certainly ensure that that language is provided in a document or we're given the, you know, bidding information in advance, so we understand that that is in fact in writing, that we're agreeing to that, yes.
Thank you. The only other question I'm...it's coming to my mind, is kind of a worst-case scenario, I guess, is what would happen if someone did purchase this property? And it's...I mean, what are the...what is the city's ability to direct how it's used? Because currently, it is in use.
Well, the good news, as there's a note in the memo, the city does have two 15-foot easements. Are they...what's the exact title of them, Eric? Do you remember?
I believe they're stormwater easements.
Yeah, they...and we do...those are recorded. So basically, we have legal rights to that, which empty out into this property. And so I think we could...we obviously could still assert that those, we have control over those, and this is essential to the functioning of those. I think it's unlikely that anyone would bid on this property. But directly to your question, the city does have condemnation authority. So, you know, if it was a worst-case scenario, we could look down those types of avenues to, you know, compensate the owner for the value of that property, but then take it for it's the use that it's required for the city.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good questions, council president, good answers. Counselor Bonnington, please.
Okay, so I have a little real estate insight on this property in particular. Just to clarify, though, this class action lawsuit is basically when counties are seizing properties and then selling them at auction for back taxes, the concern is that they're not then giving the rest of the proceeds back to the property owners after they've covered those? Is that what that's about?
Hold on one moment. I'm going to bring my associate up, so she can give a little more background on that. She's spoken with Dan at the county and done a lot of research. So Kristin, thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, everyone. So the class action is a very broad class action for counties that were selling properties that were foreclosed upon for more than the back taxes, and then keeping those back taxes. Now those prior property owners that used to own the homes are bringing a class action lawsuit to recover that surplus amount.
Okay, perfect. That's what I had heard. I just wanted to verify it was the same class action. So I guess I would assume that they would be the ones who need to deal with that if that lawsuit goes forward. But the adjacent property at 4110 Cornwall is...there are two of them, and they've both been for sale, and they're currently pending. I don't know what developer has them under contract, but they're right next to this lot that we're talking about. So I could see that there's the potential they might be interested in bidding.
Are you jumping over to the other property?
Yes. The one off of Reed Street. Yeah. So we could find out probably who is under contract for that, but I could see them being interested in picking this up as well, or working something out if they're going to be developing this.
It would need to be right away. So if they were to purchase it, it would end up, hopefully, turned back over to the city. And the price that I was given was reasonable for this quarter acre. It was $1,100.
Okay.
For the...and we've...I don't...to answer your question, we've seen a couple proposals and worked with Icon about developing that. I'm not sure where that stands. It's back and forth, and I don't believe anybody has it under contract at this time, but they've come in with a couple of proposals about how they would lay out the site, and the road continued going west, I believe it is, towards Reed. So that's why the idea of purchasing this parcel came up.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I think that when that eventually is probably developed, that will be important to turn that into a through street. But I can clearly see on RMLS that the 4110 Cornwall parcels are both pending. So those will close presumably in the next few weeks, and we'll know exactly who owns them now. But yeah, I could see whoever that is being interested in bidding on it, too.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Counselor Brink.
And to be clear, the Reed property is not an auction. That's just, we can put in an offer to purchase at that price.
Correct, yeah. That one's not at auction. That was just a...
Got it.
Would you be interested in selling this?
Got it.
And they said, sure.
Okay.
Sorry if I was...if I confused the issue.
Bye then.
And then they came at me with the rest of these properties that would be at an auction.
And then on the other property, that is our stormwater facility, normally under development programs, big development programs, that stormwater facility is a requirement of the development, and typically, that would be beeded over to the city. In this case, it didn't happen at the time, because there were some deficiencies in the facility. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. And under normal circumstances, that property, the county would sell that property to us or even potentially give that property to us, given that we've been stewards of it for so long. The issue is that it's subject to this class action suit, so it puts it in a different camp. But I even asked her, she said, I wish I could, you know, make a deal with you, have it appraised, just like, you know, the other property, and sell it to you, but this one's much more complicated. And so the best way, if you want to secure it, is to go through the auction process, because it's cleaner for the city.
Thank you, everybody. Any other comments? I think based on the presentation, it makes sense to move forward and to acquire these properties, especially at the low cost. And it sounds like we're getting one property for potential use as a road in the future right away, and one for a stormwater facility that we already own, but making sure we keep maintaining it. So I think it makes sense to move forward. And I would entertain a motion, and we can deliberate if anybody'd like to.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-14, approving the acquisition of real property tax lots 21E26D00907 and 21E36BA04000 in Westland, Oregon.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2025-14, approving the acquisition of real property tax lots 21E26D00907 and 21E36BA0400 in Westland, Oregon. Any final discussion? Thank you, staff and legal counsel, for all your work bringing this to us, and Kristin as well. Thank you. See, I see no comments. So we can call the roll.
Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Broner?
Yes.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mary Beal Staski?
Yes. So the resolution passes unanimously, and we look forward to hearing the results of the sales. Good luck at the auction. I know it'll be riveting.
I got my paddle ready to go.
Uh...
Thanks.
Well, as darkness falls outside, we're getting ready to be done with our city council meeting. 6:50, ahead of schedule. We were supposed to be out at 8:00, but we were able to move through the agenda with relative efficiency tonight. I appreciate that, everybody. The last item is the city manager report. Maybe we can touch base during this on the next steps for your evaluation as well.
Could you do that as well? You bet. So as always, starting with upcoming meetings, your next meeting is a work session next Tuesday evening on the 21st. You have two planning items, the Vision 43, the waterfront vision plan. Darren is returning frequently to mayor and council on the vision plan to make sure that we have your direction crystal clear and correctly. And the next version has the updates that you requested at your last work session. So we'll be looking through those and making sure they're right. Also, I believe, we're still hoping to do the Marius Young Lease Agreement at that meeting. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that will be on the agenda. Following that, the next work session is until Tuesday, November 4th. November already. How about that? Just a couple of other things. So picking up on what the mayor mentioned earlier, your work session last week on budget priorities. We are already hard at work doing our assignment. As a quick reminder to all of us of what the next step was, you spent almost three and a half hours working on figuring out what projects, programs, and services you would like to prioritize inquiries into funding. And the assignment to staff was to take those three big categories that you ended up with. It was services, infrastructure, and community amenities. And for each, we are developing a short list of needs that are...have dollar signs next to them, of potential funding sources that make sense for those needs, and timelines for developing those funding sources. So Lauren Breithaupt, our finance director, has been doing excellent work putting together all the things that we've talked about before, things that we've presented to you before, and things that we're learning from other communities. So we expect in a short, maybe by the end of next week, to have a document together that would be the basis for a really good discussion on this. So one question I have back to you as council is, once we have that, what would you like to do with it? One possibility is to hold another one of those sessions, where we get together, spend the dedicated time outside of a council meeting, outside of a regular council meeting, and really focus on figuring out what you want to do with each of those. Also, we could dedicate time in a meeting. So I believe you want to keep working on this. That's what you indicated at the meeting. So would it be...was the retreat style helpful to you to focus on it? And if so, do you want to schedule another one, or do you want us to try to find a place for it on a regular council meeting agenda? That's my question to you this evening. Doesn't have to be answered tonight, but if you could, be helpful.
We can entertain discussion on that question. Counselor Groner, please.
Yeah, my feeling, if it's something we can get done in an hour, then a regular council meeting is fine, but I suspect we won't be able to do it in an hour. So I would guess we probably need a separate session.
Counselor Brink and then Counselor Bonnington.
I would agree with that. The only other way I think that we could mix it in with the regular work sessions would be to take each of those topics separately and spend time on, you know, the services, the amenities. But that will also delay our decision-making and our prioritization.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Counselor Bonnington, go ahead.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised by how quickly the three and a half hours went by. So I could imagine we might not just need one more, but probably two more, if we're being realistic. Another one to dig into what this list says and discuss that, and then potentially more discussion later about how we're going to proceed with it, so.
So it sounds like there's some support from council in general for at least one more session. And we'll see what we can get done in that meeting and what the next steps would be out of that. But I thought the retreat format, especially given the importance of the topic, the city's budget and finances and staffing and needs, is worth just having a separate, dedicated kind of facilitated retreat-style meeting.
Good. Thank you. We will work on scheduling that, and I'll work with the mayor on the schedule. I appreciate that.
That's great.
There's also, as we mentioned, or as I've talked to several of you about, I think there's a possibility that we could just carry this over into goal-setting for next year as well. This facilitator does goal-setting for councils all over the region, and it's possible that we could weave these things together and be efficient with it in an early January session. But we'll hope to have the discussion, the part-two discussion sooner than that, for sure. So thank you for that. Just a few calendar events. The Fall Festival was already mentioned, so make sure to stop by the Fall Festival, one of our favorites. And the holiday events are actually on the radar, the bizarre at the ACC, November 15th and 16th, the tree lighting on December 5th. So Parks and Rec, working hard downstairs, dusting off the throne for Santa, and all such things that come out before we even know it. So I appreciate their work. One exciting event possibility, and I know we don't have a lot of viewers, so the word won't officially get out necessarily if I say this here, but we are...there's a small group of us working to bring back the street dance. And it is a, basically, a coalition of business owners on Main Street who want to bring it back. We have, as a city, we have told them we don't have the resources to run the street dance ourselves. Some of you will remember the street dance, a beloved event, that hasn't actually been back since COVID, which I hadn't realized, but has not been back since COVID. And there's a great group of folks that I'm working with to bring it back with more private sponsorship, and targeting August of 2026. That'd be fun to bring back, I think, really good. That, I gave you a bunch of information last week. I have a few more things next week, but I think that'll do it for tonight.
Thank you. And I hear from a lot of people, they want the street dance back, and so that's going to be very popular. I enjoyed going to that when I was a few years ago.
And Mr. Mayor, at the beginning, you mentioned, touching on the evaluation.
Yes.
I'm happy to support you in that. You have my self-evaluation now, so it's just the timeline from there on. Whenever you would like, we can get an executive session scheduled to do the actual review.
Yes, that's what I wanted to touch base about. And so Mr. Williams sent out his self-evaluation, and then in that, he and I worked together to use the survey format that we used last year. It's like technically called a survey monkey, but it's, you click the link and you can fill out the forms with your thoughts. thoughts and there's some questions on there. Uh, and I just, Mr. Williams sent that out and I just re-forwarded it to the city council tonight, just as a reminder, so that everybody can do that. And, uh, I don't know if the best approach is to pick a date now or just have Kathy send out a doodle poll. But if everybody, for example, had their, uh, their thoughts in by next Tuesday, we could have an executive session that evening uh, to finish up the evaluation process. Or we could.
That's a pretty busy day for all of us, it looks like. We have the Metro Mixer.
Oh, there's a mixer that night. Okay, that's the Metro Mixer also. Uh, so, okay, we will, uh, I'll just have, we'll work with Kathy and there's, and our wonderful staff to, uh, get a doodle poll sent out with some potential dates for that in the, in the next couple of weeks or next three weeks, so we can schedule that executive session.
That's great. Uh, perhaps the, um, the, the, the key thing here is how long would council like to complete the evaluation that you have to do? And then we can choose dates after that. So, just, next week? End of next week, middle of?
I think.
Whatever you would like.
Would people like till next week?
Yeah.
So like another week to do the form? Okay, so that, that, does that make sense?
Dates after that.
Yeah, we'll look at dates and then I know.
It's available now.
Yep, the form's available now and I know you're out of the office as well, Mr. Williams, at the, uh, ICMA conference. So for a little, so we'll look at, maybe a couple of dates before then or maybe after that. Thank you. So we will work on that and just wanted to bring that up with city council and for the public as well. Uh, anything else for the good of the order tonight?
Happy birthday.
Hey, thank you.
I just.
Twenty-six tomorrow. I'm finally off my mom's parents.
I just wanted to thank whoever did all this lovely decorating and it's very cheerful and I love autumn, so thank you.
Nice pumpkins and gourds. I think they're gourds, right?
You're welcome. That was me.
Really? That's, that's nice.
Detail too small around here.
Hey. That's awesome. We're in the festive spirit for fall. Anything else? See, nothing, so we will, we're adjourned until, uh, October twenty-first, next Tuesday. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.